Commissioners, are you ready? Okay, welcome back. We're back from our closed session. We're gonna move into a meeting now with Public Health, Dave Wyndham. Welcome aboard, Dave. You're on mute.
Happy Monday.
Hey, we may have appreciated you better that way.
Okay, we're start off with Ian with a couple of items here.
Morning Commissioners. Uh, first item I have up for you is, uh, most of my items are just FYIs today. Um, this first item is, uh, the Board of Health, uh, recently reappointed Keith Fuller, uh, was Realtor to the On-Site Suits Advisory Committee. Um, Keith's been a great addition to our, our board and he has great attendance. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that he was, he was reappointed for an additional three years and we're really, really happy to have him. Uh, next item is something that we've been working on for a while and, uh, with the addition of Julie's expertise in Smarco, Julie with DCD, um, we've been able to get our residential septic system permit online. And that's just a, you know, major milestone for us in getting that, that done. Uh, that's one of our main permit types. And, uh, so far unfortunately, a lot of our, our designers, when we've told them about it, have just said, uh, I'm just gonna keep it doing it by paper. Uh, but we have had a few designers that are, that are happy about it. Uh, there's a lot of good things about it. It lets people pay online by credit card. They can have their customers login to the permit. Once the permit is created, so their customer can pay and that helps them with their, you know, financial side of things. They don't have to take in the customer's money to themselves and then pay that out for the permit. Uh, so we think it's gonna result in a lot of improvements for our customers. Um, reduced amount of paper we handle and hopefully streamline our processes. Uh, so we're, we're pretty excited about that. Did, uh, any of you have any questions about that one? Um, and then, uh, the third item is something new we're doing, uh, we've never done before. So we had, uh, back in, in March, we started talking to the Board of Health about this. Uh, we had several uh, interested, uh, small business owners that wanted to do what's called street vending. And, um, street vending is basically a temporary event that is, it's, it's like, let me go back to what a temporary event is. So a temporary event would be like, uh, setting up a booth at Oyster Fest or, uh, Forest Festival and, you know, serving some food type and drinks and, you know, like a small food business. That's a temporary setup with a tent, uh, you know, ice chests, temporary hand washing setup. And, uh, currently in Mason County, you can only do that at events and you can get up to a 21 day permit to do that, but it has to be at a, you know, a, a public, uh, event. And what this would allow you to do is to set up a temporary setup like that, but not at a specific event. So someone could set up at a, you know, parking lot, a street corner. Um, we have some people that wanna set up out in Matlock. We have a few remote locations where people wanna set up a, a, a food vending setup, uh, where there isn't a lot of options for people right now. And what this new permit type will allow is for someone to do that without it being associated with an event. Um, and there's reduced, uh, you know, startup cost to something like that. Obviously they, they don't have a, you know, they're not buying a food truck or buying a brick and mortar facility. Um, so we're, we're still working on the, the full setup of that. We have to create a new permit type in Smarco. We have to come up with fees um, and create the new forms, but, uh, this is something that Thurston County's been doing for about two years now. And they didn't have any, uh, any negative feedback about it. It seemed to be working out well for them and the Board of Health did approve that. So we're going to get that arranged and then we'll do some, um, more public outreach. But, uh, we're, we'll work initially with just the, the applicants that, that originally brought this up to the Board of Health. Um, did, uh, any of you have any questions about this?
I wanna say something about it first, uh, Commissioners, uh, it was brought to my attention something I hadn't thought about, even though we're not in this program and, uh, but it could eventually be a competition for my son's business. Uh, and I should probably recuse myself from the discussions, even though I don't see a connection, just to be safe. Uh, I'm supportive, so, uh, I definitely wouldn't be hurting somebody from trying to try it, but when in doubt, stay out. So with that being said, uh, Commissioners, uh, if this is going to move forward or not move forward, it's gonna have to come from one of the two of you.
Commissioner, did you already, uh, vote at the Board of Health? On this or weigh in on it at the Board of Health meeting?
Uh, I'm sure I've, uh, we've talked about it. I don't know if we even had a vote or anything, but but again, uh, I don't think it's even anything wrong, but the appearance of it could be.
Oh, just the reason I ask is in the briefing document, it says on July 23rd, the Board of Health approved a new food establishment permit type. So I just, that's why I was asking.
No, we could have if we did. But they can't approve it anyway. It says that approves it or it's the Commission that approves it from not mistaken.
Um, no, not in this stand, uh, in this, in this case, the, th- this type of this permit type is a, it's a policy. It's a public health policy change because it's already allowed within the state food code through a variance. So the Board of Health authorities required to, to approve something like this in Mason County.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to handle that. Uh, Mark, uh, if you don't mind, give that some thought and, but are you asking for it to come before the Commission now though for approval?
No, this is just a, this is just bringing it to your attention so that it's, it's formally on the record as, you know, I'm, I'm informing the Commission that this happened at the Board of Health meeting. Obviously, you know, the three of you were, were there and are aware of it.
So Mark, let's see if there's an issue with that and we'll ask, uh, Tim and see if it maybe needs to come back before him, although I'm not a part of this and it is what it is. It's a stretch to say it anyway.
Like, I can definitely reach out to Tim and ask.
Okay. All right, what else you got?
Um, I think that might be my, oh, uh, one, one thing I forgot to mention about, uh, the On-Site Suits Advisory Committee. Right now we have three vacancies. Uh, we do have one citizen position that's open that we have, uh, an interested party in, so we sent them an application. So we're hoping to maybe get that filled pretty soon. But otherwise, uh, we have one vacant designer position and we still have not uh, had a, uh, a member of the shellfish industry, um, send in a representative, but we do have um, folks on the, on the group that are talking to them and still trying to get, get some engagement. Apparently there, there's disagreement on who will, uh, come and provide representation. So, uh, maybe that's a good thing. There's, there's, there's a lot of people that wanna, wanna do it.
How would you like to handle that?
The representation from the shellfish industry.
Uh huh. Uh, Kevin, you have a really good relationship with Taylor, don't you?
Yeah, fairly good. I can reach out to them.
Are you comfortable with that Ian? If he goes ahead and reaches out?
I think it's fine to reach out and talk to him about it. I, I, my understanding from, uh, the, the board member, sorry, the, the committee, the committee member that, um, is been communicating with them is that they have, it's the Pacific, uh, Shellfish Growers Association and that association would nominate someone to put forward to be on our board and that they've, uh, they've not been able to come to an agreement on who should come to the board. So, um, I think if, uh, Commissioner Shuget gets some clarifying information about, you know, what is involved with that decision and what they might need for us to help them send somebody. I think that'd be great.
Yeah, um, let's maybe you and I chat offline and give me a little bit more detail, but I'm happy to get some more information from them. From the grows association, for sure.
Commissioner Trask, you have any comments or thoughts on that?
Nope, I think Ian's got it under control.
And as for the other applicant that's coming in, we have nobody interviewed until we have that before us, right?
Yeah.
And when we do, uh, Commissioners, no matter who it is, you wanna bring him in for an interview?
I think we follow our, our normal, um, protocol and we interview them.
So Ian, if you do get an application, turn it into, uh, uh, Diane and ask her to put it on the agenda, please.
Alright.
Mackenzie, C.C. Mackenzie on that too, please.
Probably should have said Mackenzie in the first place. What else you got?
Okay, Melissa.
Morning Commissioners, I just have one item today, um, something that we've briefed a few times in the past, um, at the June 4th Action Agenda, the Board approved an amendment with the Department of Commerce, accepting the additional funds for fiscal year 25, um, CHG standard and local document recording, um, fees to support our homeless response system. We put out an RFP, a request for proposal earlier this summer for $512,000 and the purpose of that was to get, um, applications from providers that are already doing the work to enhance and really kind of expand their programs so that we can reach more people. We received four proposals. Um, the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board has reviewed those and has made the funding recommendation to fund $110,000 to Shelton Family Center's eviction prevention program. Um, it costs about $3,000 to $5,000 a household. So with those additional funds, Shelton Family Center should be able to fund between 20 and 35 more households over fiscal year 25. So, um, we are just bringing this to the Board for approval.
Commissioner Trask.
Well, I know Shelton Family Center does a great job. So happy to see that they're getting more money so that they can help more of our youth.
Mr. Shuget, are you supportive?
I am as well. This, uh, this fits within our top priorities for, um, addressing the housing crisis in the community and so, um, they will be a great partner.
All right, looks like you have three.
Thank you so much. That's all I've got.
What else you got, Dave?
That is, that is, it on our formal agenda.
Mark, you saying something?
Oh yeah, just a real quick question for Melissa. Um, so is this, is this gonna be focused on, um, homeless youth?
Yes, correct. So Shelton Family Center, it works with youth up to 24, age 24.
Okay, great, thank you.
So we did attend, um, this last week, um, Representative Kilmer's uh, symposium here in Shelton. Uh, a number of us went, Mark was there, I was there. Uh, we had, uh, folks from Public Health there as well to look at homelessness and, and work on some solutions. One of the things we're gonna be working on, um, through Public Health is um, writing language for RCW on what constitutes a vulnerable adult. So that's some things we'll be working on in, in the near future. And the hope is, is to get that submitted to, um, the House of Representatives, uh, this fall, early this fall. So it gets on to the legislative agenda in, um, uh, early January. So something we're working on here. One of the things we found is that there's a gap. Um, vulnerable adult doesn't include anyone under the age of 60. So we're gonna work on that.
Yeah, that was an interesting meeting. The one where I had Dave is by the time they were done talking, uh, the definition would start to include everybody and
Yeah.
that's not gonna, that's not gonna happen. It's
No.
You know, I, I know they mean well, but that's why apparently I would guess that's why it never got any further than what it has now.
No, and, and I, I talked to, um, uh, a code writer that works with, uh, Green Diamond and he and I will work on the language to, to put some tight brackets on that, you know, expand the definition, but have some brackets that are, they're clearly definable.
Okay, anything else for, uh, Dave?
Yeah, Dave, can you get ahold of me, um, probably later after this meeting? And, um, we talked about some ideas about something with moving forward. And so let's, let's get together and start making some concrete decisions on those.
Okay, and I, I suppose I could, I could take a, a couple of minutes here just to update you on our, our move to the new building. Going well. Uh, Kelly and crew are doing the painting, carpeting. That stuff's going in. Uh, it looks like we will be moving in starting probably the end of, of the month. So, uh, we will put together an open house for sometime after that. We're gonna be moving in kind of echelons, you know, one group moves, then another group moves and then, um, well, soon we'll have that whole section moved in. Um, and it just seems to be moving right along. So to speak.
Anything else more for Dave? Thank you, Dave.
Just would love, Dave, I, I think it'd be important to, to develop our messaging for the public to let them know that those services are moving there and more than just a, a thing out the door that says, hey, we've moved. Uh, if we could get to maybe a, a public service announcement out, uh, in the paper.
Yeah, we're, we're working with Jeff, uh, Slakey to work on that. And then of course, uh, social media will be a, a big push because a lot of our clientele that we're looking to serve, uh, uses social media, so.
Great, thank you.
And a, a word of mouth too, because a lot of our, uh, clientele, um, uh, non-English speaking, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dave. Next up, we have, uh, Public Works, uh, Loretta.
Good morning.
Hi.
All right, our first two items Commissioners are a couple of annual requests that we, um, run by the Board. And the first is we are requesting authorization to go out to bid for our chip seal materials and our paint striping materials and are asking to put that on the action agenda.
Any issues with that Commissioners? Okay, what else you got?
Uh, next, similar situation, but this is for professional services. And we typically employ geotechnical engineers, cultural resources folks, um, a variety of professional services, material testing. And we are requesting approval to go out to add for that and enter into contracts for services that will help us deliver our projects for the next couple of years.
Okay. Comment, same thing, Commissioners?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, what else you got, Loretta?
Okay, next item, we are asking Commissioners for approval to close Little Egypt Road. And the closure would occur from September 9th through October 16th. And this is to do some bridge work on Little Egypt. And the project is funded with bridge program funding and Quig Brothers will be performing the work. And we have a whole slew of outreach methods that we'll be, um, using to notify folks of the closure.
I know you'll be handling it as quickly as you possibly can. Uh, it'll just be stopping for the flow, uh, all the, the through route though, right? People could still just go all the way around to get to their homes and have access from the other side.
From either end, correct, but no, no through, yep.
Uh, which Commissioner, that Commissioner Shuget's area, right? What are you thinking Commissioner? Any issue with that?
Uh, no issue.
Commissioner Trask.
Uh, no, it's like you got everything under control.
There we go.
Okay, thank you Commissioners. The next two items, we're asking to, um, read news releases during the next Commission meeting. Advertising for positions on our citizen advisory committees. And one is for the TIPCAP, our Transportation Improvement Program Advisory Committee, and the other is for our SWAC or Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And we currently have, let's see, three positions, I believe, open on TIPCAP and two on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
Okay. We have no issue with you announcing that. Commissioners, any issue?
Me.
Nope.
All right, and then the last item I have for action agendas. We are asking approval from the Commission to authorize myself and Stephanie to be sign, signators and submitters for reimbursement for the last FEMA, um, for FEMA reimbursement. And so this will be for primarily, uh, debris that was removed off county roads. And then we also will have potentially, uh, the ability to become reimbursed for about $5,000 or deductible for, um, the damages that happened to the Belfair wastewater treatment plant during the last freeze event.
No issues with that, it's good.
None with me.
What else you got, Loretta?
Okay, great. And then we have a couple of discussion items Commissioners. We, um, and I will, if, I know I circulated a draft of a letter to Department of Ecology and to our partners with the Army Corps of Engineers regarding the Skopanish project. And if that looks agreeable, I will put that on letterhead and we will send that communication or bring that back for action on the 13th to then send the communication out.
Okay.
Yeah, looks good to me.
All right.
Okay, and then we'll follow up also with some communications, of course, with the, the landowners within the, the valley. Bring them up to speed as well.
We have nothing, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, Loretta, on that, um, you and I can chat a little bit later today, of course, but, um, you know, it might be, once, once we kinda get the letter out there and do a little bit of regrouping internally or, and with the Conservation District of the Tribe. And it might be good to have a, just a community meeting in the fall, uh, just to, to kind of, you know, give people a chance to, to talk through it with us and all that kinda stuff. So just, I think, maybe be prepared for that in, in September or October.
Agreed, great, thank you Commissioner. Okay, and then next we have our, um, hearing coming up on the Shetland Road Improvement District. And Lovejoy and team have put together a very large package Commissioners in preparation for that. And I believe, yes, Lovejoy's on here and is happy to walk through. Hopefully the, the flow chart will help you see what has happened previously and then steps that are to come, um, after the formation hearing. And Lovejoy is here to present.
Good morning.
Hi.
We are, well, we've had lots of comments from property owners, mostly good. Uh, but we are just doing this mostly to determine, well, some of the issues that we've run across, I've been discussing with Sierra at the Assessor's Office as far as the exemptions from the RID. Um, basically we put together the packet with the district formation, the cost, the estimates. We put out the notice of hearing. Project timelines. Uh, also the community impact and environmental considerations. But some of the questions that I've had as recently as Friday was more towards the tax exemptions. And how are they going to affect the property owners that stay with the, um, senior citizens that are exempt and what happens if later down the road they're not exempt? And I've been discussing that with Sierra on that. And how there's a couple of different options and how it can be done. But that it's basically, um, up to you guys as to how we move forward on that. I think, what did we say? We had, Sierra said we had four active senior citizen exemptions for 2025? And I think it was 15 additional ones that were in, uh, either open space or timberland, forest land exemptions.
So now, let me ask you a question on, on those exemptions. Uh, do these people already pay into a road fund?
Ones at the very top for Sunny Woods Development, I believe is what it is. Yes, they pay HOA fees for the road improvements. For the, all of those private roads up there on the top end of that development.
And is it a way to keep it separate for those that are in open spaces? Is there an issue with keeping it separate? Does it have to be included automatically or what are you finding?
That I don't know. I haven't spoke to any of them up there. As far as the one that's in the open space, I've spoke with the one lady that is a senior citizen exemption that was worried about paying the HOA fees for the road improvements of the private roads and then paying the RID fees. But I spoke to her and let her know that, you know, as far as, as long as you're still in that senior citizen status classification, that you're exempt. And you know, she didn't tell me to change her vote one way or another after that, so I don't know how.
So are they gonna continue to charge both?
For the top portion, yes, I believe so, because they have because the, the new Shetland Road will only go up to that certain point, then stop. And then all of the roads that run east to west are still going to remain private. As to whether or not the amount's gonna change. Which I don't know.
Kevin, uh, this is yours out there. Uh, what, what are your opinions? What are you thinking on this?
Yeah, I, I, you know, in terms of the exemptions or in terms of like, yeah, I, I'm surprised a little bit. I maybe need to think about it a little bit more and maybe have some conversation, but um, yeah, how many, how many potential parcels does this affect, Lovejoy?
Um, I think Sierra had the exact number because she just ran it. Are you still there, Sierra? Again, she said.
Yes, good morning Commissioners. So there are 91 total parcels within the RID boundary. Four of which have a senior exemption, 15 of which have, um, either DFO or open space. Um, there's also a number of parcels that are exempt. They are state owned. And that is 15, there are 15 state owned exempt parcels.
Well then, how many are left to share? You have 15 to 14 open space, four that are, are not, 33.
Well, I believe there was that statute that states as far as the state owned ones, they could still be assessed for the Road Improvement District.
Correct.
And that's why we sent out the extra 30 day notice because they were required to have a 30 day notice.
Gotcha. Mr. Shuget, anything else you're thinking?
No, not at the moment. Uh, I guess just if I'm looking at the map that you have included here. So are the exempt parcels, the one, or state parcel rather, are the ones that are blue? And then where you have petition status? Um, can you, can you just kinda walk me through the key on here so I understand a little better? Like what?
I believe it is the blue ones are the state. The, uh, red ones are the ones that voted no. There should be four of those.
Okay.
And then the yellow ones are ones that didn't respond at all. And then the green ones voted yes for it.
Gotcha, okay. So it's still overwhelming support?
Yes.
And the, uh, DNR, it, they're, they're coded differently on here because they don't get to vote or they do vote or how does that, they vote as a block?
They could have, but they didn't vote.
Good call.
Yeah, which is typical.
Commissioner Trask, any, uh, comments or opinions?
No, it seems like the, most of the responses we've received have been in favor of this. So I've not seen any that have been opposed to it. You just wanna get it then.
The, yeah, there's four that were no's, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
And Lovejoy, they have up until just prior to the hearing, correct, to submit any changes, um, in their vote. So between Mackenzie and ourselves, depending, they should be going to the Clerk of the Board. Um, but we will prepare a summary, um, as close to the hearing as we can for any changes in votes for Commissioners.
It'll be an interesting ride.
Yeah, and then, um, once the district is formed, also Lovejoy has sent out the right of way deeds. Um, so we're trying to make sure that we're streamlined as quickly as possible. And upon formation and after completion of the SEPA determination, um, we should be ready to go in terms of, of making the improvements. So that is our plan.
Anything further on this Commissioners? Anything further on this, commissioners? No? Okay, what else you got, Lorena?
Oh, just a big thank you to the other departments. Um, Lisa, I don't think is on here, but certainly the treasurer and the assessor's office have been very helpful. And as I know, you know, commissioners, in forming the, the lake management districts, it's a, a big team effort between the departments, so definitely appreciate Lovejoy and Sierra and Lisa and everybody's assistance on, on getting us this far. And other than that, um, I think that's about it, other than just taking a look at the upcoming items that you see on the calendar. We have some other anticipated road closures, uh, for our other annual construction projects that are underway. And we also have a, a, uh, hearing on the thirteenth as well for declaring some surplus property, commissioners.
Okay, commissioners, any questions in regards to any of those?
For me, thank you.
Okay. And, uh, do you have anything for Lorena?
Nothing for me.
No, I don't have anything.
Lorena, I do, uh, it's a, it's kind of a thing for commissioner discussion and, uh, for you because of utilities. So I, I've received a phone call from, uh, somebody on Ketchumack Road who's trying to build a home again. And we have a large charge, we, we require them to hook up to the sewer, but there's no sewer. And currently, there's no plans to bring sewer out there. But yet we charge them. And then if I remember the law correctly, after ten years, we have to give them all this money back. And, you know, there's determination still at what point, what interests the stuff too, and how that's done. We're coming close here soon to some of these, I think. I think we need to have a discussion whether this is something we want to continue to do.
Yeah, agreed. So we also have some code revisions that we need to bring back before commissioners. And this would be a, this is one of them, quite frankly, that we would be recommending, um, to revise.
What are you thinking? Are you thinking about doing away with it, uh?
Yeah.
Completely, okay?
Yeah.
When do you plan to bring that to us?
Uh, before year end, but, um, we're not quite ready. We're wrapping up budget, so.
Okay. Well, I'll pass that on to the citizens and let them know. Uh, commissioners, do you have any, any thoughts on this issue? Before I call the citizen and tell them what our discussion was?
I, I don't, but I also thought of something else for Lorena, so we get to figure this out.
Okay, gotcha. Commissioner Trask, do you have anything on this, uh, idea? And, and, uh, do you know what we're talking about on the, uh, the tenure, uh, regulations we have to hand back?
I do with, yeah, I do. We've, we've talked about it before. So, yeah, fully understand it completely. And, um, no, I think it's a, if they're not getting sewer, then I, you know, makes you wonder why we have it.
Okay. All right, uh, Kevin, what'd you, what else you got?
Yeah, Lorena, I heard, uh, kind of through the community, um, that there's a, a potential petition going to DOT for a crosswalk in Union, I think on one oh six.
Yes.
You've heard anything about that? And, and, um, if the commission is supportive of, uh, that request, what can we do to help out?
Yeah, I, we have. And then also, I guess commissioners, I'd like to have a little broader conversation about that and also with DOT. Because if we continue down this path, we're gonna have a our, our budget will be growing on crosswalks, so just want to, um, make sure we're all on the same page about that.
What does that mean exactly, Lorena?
Well, the we are paying for the damages that occur to the lighting and the, the, the crosswalks themselves. We've been paying for the power at these locations. Sometimes we, in one instance, we paid for the actual installation. Uh, more recently, we did not. Um, somebody else paid for the installation. So there's kind of been a mix on how we've been approaching the, the cost for these crosswalks. Definitely supportive of the crosswalk, one hundred percent.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, you know, the, the a, a great example of where DOT should have been having us pay for anything is the crosswalk that they installed at the state park on one oh six. If anything, that should be a state park's, uh, contribution to that. They should be paying for the power. They should be paying for the maintenance and upkeep of it, not us.
Yeah.
So if there is a, if there's an opportunity for us to, to talk about that with DOT, I think that's a great example of where they've gotten it wrong, even though I'm very supportive and happy with the outcome there.
Yeah.
It, it's, it should not be us and DOT or just us, it should be DOT and state parks there. And frankly, I mean, if, you know, if the community, if their constituents want a crosswalk across the state facility, then they should be receptive to that. Um, and, and figure it out without penalizing the local jurisdiction.
Yeah, and that one, um, definitely was a missed opportunity, especially with the, the project underway. Yeah, which is probably how they wrapped in the, the, the initial construction.
So Commissioner Shute, he asked for the petition and the idea of us signing on, uh, or whether or not to, I would be very supportive of moving forward if you want to bring that.
Yeah, I want to track down a copy of the petition. I think there's a couple of locations in Union where they are asking people to sign. I want to see what that says first. And then I think it would be appropriate for us to, you know, consider doing our, our own letter, uh, directly to DOT, um. But we all should, we all should, also should sort out some of these other
Agreed.
issues of, uh, cost sharing and things like that, um. Not a deal, but I don't know what our, I don't know what our crosswalk budget is normally, and I don't know what an increase to that looks like, but it's definitely something to consider if it's, uh, if it's something that should be borne by the state DOT.
And I, I, I agree with you too, Commissioner. The one thing is, though, uh, these are our, uh, UGA's, our racks and stuff like that. And, uh, considering we don't have any side roads, we're almost thrown into being a participant in this stuff, uh. But I'm, I'm supportive of bringing it forward if you decide to bring it forward. Commissioner Trask, do you have any heartburn with any of this?
No, I'd like to see where they're, where they're proposing to, to put them, you know. One oh six is, is kind of a, a large stretch there, so I'd like to know whether, where, where they're proposing to them.
I think it's in the area of Two Margaritas and the country store.
Yeah.
Where there's a lot of foot traffic between the Marina and the other side of the road, McGreevy House, all that. So totally makes sense. I think I just want to see how everything is is worded and what they're asking for specifically beyond that. But I think overall, it's, it's worth our support.
And whether it's a good site distance too, to be safe, uh, you know, every year, that would make sense. Where every year I get people from, uh, the North Shore that want to crosswalk at the state park there. But the thing is, there's nothing on the other side. I, you know, they may park there wherever, but it's not a big issue except for a short period of time. And then we had the other one in Grapeview that would like to see something like that. I was just out there for the water festival and I'm like, you put a crosswalk there, somebody's gonna get hurt. I just don't see a safe place, except for put it way down the road. And I have a hard time believing people are gonna walk way down the road to go across the crosswalk to come all the way back and still be walking on the, the road while they're doing it. That's not an extremely wide road, so. I don't know, it's not, I guess what they're talking about. I just couldn't see how to do it safely, so. All right, so yeah, if you don't mind bringing some of that stuff back, we'll look at it, we'll look at putting something together for, uh, uh, the commission to weigh in.
Great, yeah, once we get the petition, and it should be here fairly soon. I know that there was a recent communication with Dave, Smith and Mike. So we'll round that up. And if you like, commissioners, we can draft a letter for your signature and support.
All right, we have anything else for Lorena? Erin Dunn, thank you, Lorena, have a great day.
Yep, thank you, commissioners.
We're gonna move on to Mark Nerea, Support Services. Hi, Mark, what do you got for us?
Uh, first item is open space application. So McKenzie, are you gonna present this one?
I am. Good morning, commissioners. Uh, this first request is to rescind approval of Douglas and Kelly Palmer's twenty twenty-three open space application that was recently approved at the July sixteenth public hearing. The application fee was not paid and Mr. and Ms. Palmer have since decided to rescind their application. We did speak with legal and the recommended action is to rescind that approval in a public meeting.
Okay, Commissioner, yup, everybody's on board. What else you got?
All right, the second one is just kind of an overall update on public records requests that have come in for the first half of the year. Uh, I had Kami run quite the report for me. Um, so if there are any specifics, I can absolutely email those out after. Um, it looks like so far, we have received three hundred and eighty-eight public records requests and staff have spent an estimated total of three hundred and twenty-eight hours fulfilling these requests.
Commissioners, questions?
McKenzie, I'm sorry, can you just say again when this is through? Is this just for the second quarter or?
This is the first half. I believe this was up until the very end of July.
Okay.
A lot of requests. And I know you guys do a great job of getting them out there and, and working on them, so appreciate you and Kami and everybody else that fulfills those, so. You make us look good.
Is this within every department or just through us?
This is all departments, thank goodness.
All right, what else you got? Uh, anything else, uh, for, uh, McKenzie, commissioners?
Uh, McKenzie, just for clarification, are these, once they are fulfilled, are they public?
Yes.
Are they not public before they're built?
Normally, we wait until we close them out. I mean, you can absolutely request information on them. We just try to wait until we've completed them before we make them public.
All right, anything else for McKenzie?
Great job.
Thank you, McKenzie. Mark?
Uh, just a, a reminder for staff on this. I think it's, uh, it's important to track information associated with the time that it takes. So the legislature asked that we, um, or they actually asked in the form of a requirement, um, that we have to report on this on an annual basis. So all of the departments and offices, um, staff that are working on fulfilling these public records requests, it's really important to put down your time so that the legislature can see the impact of, of public records requests and, um, not only the volume, but also the, the time that it takes.
Uh, both Kevin and Sharon, you guys are connected here on this one, uh. There's been a few little changes when it comes to public records requests for the state representatives, uh. Uh, do you know what has changed and what they're subject to compared to what they, uh, we are?
Not as much as we are.
Oh, the, are you talking about what's open to the public from the legislature?
Yes.
Mark would know this also, but, uh, um, we are, we are very transparent compared to, uh, most to them.
Just curious, we knew. All right, what else you got, Mark?
Uh, that's all that we had for you today.
Okay. Uh, commissioners, do you have anything for Mark?
I have anything for Mark.
All right, Commissioner, discussions.
I don't have anything for Commissioner Discussion.
You're on a roll. Sharon? Okay, uh, then how about, uh, I'll entertain a motion?
I'll just say, well, here, I'll just say one thing, this is a positive thing. So, uh, I don't know how many of you were up at one AM, uh, this morning to watch CJ Allen compete in the four hundred meter hurdles. I was not, but he did, he did come in second and he advanced the next, uh, the next stage of competition, so that's super exciting.
That's pretty awesome. Uh, in our family, we're trying our best, but, uh, my wife was watching the wrong channel for the longest time. Figured it out at the end, uh, that there was more than one channel doing the Olympics, so.
Uh, in his heat, he apparently was, was, just from the article I read, I think he was leading the majority of the way. And then at the very end, a, an individual, um, from Estonia, I think, came up and, and just beat him by tenths of a second, so. Uh, it pretty, pretty amazing and, and wish him all the, the, the best luck in, in his next heats, so, exciting to see.
Yeah, very cool.
Okay, now I'll entertain a motion.
Move, we adjourn.
I'll second.
Hearing, uh, no objection, we are adjourned. I see you guys all for, uh, tomorrow at nine o'clock for the workshop.
Perfect, thanks, everybody.
Bye, everybody.